I did.
I mean, good, yeah, so you don't stumble on anything, yeah.
He brought a box with him.
Did you search him, Robbie?
Paid him to leave it in the car.
Robbie did. He went through, right?
He did.
I'm excited. How you feeling? Is it gonna work?
Yeah, so I would just say everybody at the front just don't forget to project because we signify a little bit of a barrier with the microphone and resume, but the stream looks great.
So this isn't connected to that. Okay, all right. Hey, it's good to see you. Welcome back. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Good, all right. Good morning. Mr. Rupp, how are you? Huh? It's a good place? Ready? All right. I am very pleased to call to order the June 3, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Welcome everyone back in person and also our online audience, which we hope we have a great online experience. We have a new system that we hope will work well so that people who wish to give public comment and attend remotely will be able to do so easily and also feel as if they are actually part of this meeting. So we're happy to take feedback as we roll out this new system, but hopefully it will work well and thanks to Kelly Co. Francisco and all the others that helped put this together. We will start by noting the presence of all three commissioners and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask Robbie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robbie and his team have been keeping an eye on this building through lots of work in construction throughout this pandemic, and happily the building is now complete. So we're really, really happy about that. All right, so I will start with some opening comments, which of course will begin with a COVID update. So this week we have some really wonderful news. We hit an important milestone. At least half a million Montgomery County residents have received at least one dose of COVID-19 vaccine. This represents nearly 61% of our total population and just over 70% of our eligible population, which are individuals that are age 12 and over. In addition, we believe that nearly every Montgomery County resident age 65 or older has received at least one dose of the vaccine. Our number vaccinated in this age cohort actually exceeds the most recent census estimate for this group, and that is a number from 2019. So we are very encouraged about this. On top of this, yesterday, we received some additional good news in the form of some data from the city of Philadelphia. The city of Philadelphia does not report their vaccine information to the Pennsylvania Department of Health, but they sent us information yesterday that 81,000, 81,563 Montgomery County residents have received at least one dose of vaccine in Philadelphia. And those 81,563 individuals have not been included in the numbers that we have been reporting to you for these last several months. So we believe, given this additional data, that close to 70% of our total population and 80% of county residents 12 and older have received at least one dose. So this is a great milestone and one that I just want to thank all the many, many people that helped us get there. All of our staff here at the county, all of our partners, partner pharmacies, pharmacists that have been working with us, all of the sites that have let us set up temporary vaccination clinics, our Department of Public Safety and the mobile vaccination team, we're still out vaccinating people. It's been an extraordinary accomplishment. And the vaccines are working. Our positivity rate has now been under 5% for the last 23 days. This week it is 2.47%. That's a 14-day average, so just as we look at the last couple of days, it's even lower than that. This 2.47 14-day average is the lowest that it has been since October 19, 2020. Our total seven-day average of new COVID cases as of this morning, and by the way, I just have to note that this morning we reported only 11 cases. So our total seven-day average of new COVID cases is now 19, which is the lowest it has been since mid-March of 2020, and our 14-day average for new cases is 26.7, which is the lowest it has been since late March 2020. We continue to encourage everyone to get vaccinated so that we can continue to protect our community, get back to normal, and put an end to this deadly virus. We want to remind everyone it is so quick and easy to get vaccinated in the county. If you pre-register with us, it will take less than 30 minutes to get in and out of one of our vaccine clinics, and that includes the 15-minute waiting period. Getting the vaccine doesn't cost anything. It is more widely available than ever, and it will help protect you and your family. Montgomery County Office of Public Health is currently administering Pfizer vaccine for those age 12 and older and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine for those aged 18 and older. And as a reminder, anyone under the age of 18 coming to get their vaccine must be accompanied by a parent or guardian. While walk-ups to our clinics are available, we strongly recommend that people make an appointment on our website just to speed up the onsite process. Registration can be accessed by visiting vaccine.montco PA dot org. That's vaccine dot montco PA dot org. Anyone who books with us will have the ability to choose their clinic location, the date and time of their appointment, and which vaccine they receive. We're offering evening hours at all of our vaccine clinics. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, the clinics are open until 6:15 PM for anyone who would like to get vaccinated after school or work. As a reminder, if you or a family member have any appointment issues, please email covid19@montco PA dot org, or you can call our hotline at 833-875-3967. We also mailed postcards to every residence in the county. I got mine yesterday, and these postcards have the information about how to get a vaccine on them, and it also has very important information about anyone who might need some rent or utility help. Next, I want to remind everyone that June is Pride Month, and I want to recognize that we have entered this month, and that means celebrating our LGBTQI+ community during Pride Month. I'm excited to announce that the county's third annual Pride Flag raising ceremony will happen next week. We invite all members of our community to attend the event on Tuesday, June 8, at 12:30 PM at the courthouse in Norristown. We will be joining with members of the local LGBTQI+ community to celebrate Pride Month and the sweeping impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex individuals, advocates, and allies have made on our history in the United States and our history here in Montgomery County. In addition, I'm happy to share that all the progress Pride flags are currently flying at all county buildings and facilities throughout the month of June. This is one important and visible step that we can take here at the county to show our support to members of the LGBTQI+ community here in the county. I also want to encourage people to attend the virtual Pride Month series sponsored by our Department of Health and Human Services in partnership with Prevention Education Solutions. They are sponsoring a four-part series for Pride Month that will cover topics such as growing up, LGBTQ, raising LGBTQ kids, and more. All of these events are free and held virtually. To learn more, you can visit our website at www.montco PA dot org forward slash calendar to sign up. And with that, I'll turn over to Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. Good morning. I want to talk about trails today. Saturday, June 5 is National Trails Day, a holiday started by the American Hiking Society in 1992, which was designed to recognize and advocate for the care of the local, state, and federal trails that exist. Our trail system here in Montgomery County is part of our pride and joy. It's a big part of our comprehensive plan for building connected, sustainable, and healthy communities. And we are working hard to ensure that our trails are accessible to everyone, including underserved and culturally diverse communities as well as those with disabilities. Over 2.5 million people visited our trails, which has been noted as some of the best in the country, and we are continuing to work to expand the network within the county and with surrounding counties. And though sometimes we can take them for granted, our trails are important in several ways. They allow people to enjoy and engage with nature. They encourage people to protect nature. They allow visitors to get a glimpse of culture and history, since many of them intersect with our parks and historic sites, and it allows people to get outside and get physically active and connect with people in their community. And one of the ways that we promote appreciation for our trails is through the Montco Trail Challenge. The sixth annual Montco Trail Challenge is a collaborative and family-friendly project created by the Health and Human Services, the Division of Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites, the Planning Commission, and the Commissioners' Office. The challenge began on May 1, and it runs through December 5. We have two new trails this year for 15 trails total. The Schuylkill East Trail is a new trail, and for the first time, the Perkyomen Creek Water Trail will be a part of it, and it's our first water trail that we're using. And also, Norristown Farm Park will have a new interactive educational feature Story Walk, which places a children's story along the trail inside the park. As of June 2, 747 households have signed up. That's 1,728 participants, and it includes 292 dogs. More than half of them heard about the challenge from past participants or from social media. 2018 was our highest year of participation with 727 households and 1,748 participants. So we're very close after only six weeks of registration being opened to making this our biggest year yet. We had a 70% increase in trail usage since March 2019, and there's little doubt that COVID played a big role in that, as people were at home, they were using our trails to get out for physical, mental, and emotional restoration during the pandemic. I have completed the Trail Challenge all four years that I've been a commissioner, and I'm participating for the fifth year this year, and I always see something new or learn something different about the county. Registration instructions for the Montco Trail Challenge, a full list of the trails, maps, and awards can be found at www.montco PA dot org forward slash Trail Challenge. And when you're out on the trails, please share pictures of your dogs, of yourself, selfies on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and you can use the hashtag #MontcoTrailChallenge. And I hope to see you out on the trail. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on. You had no comments, right? Now we'll move on to public comment. We will start with public comment on matters appearing on the agenda, and then we will follow that with public comment, I'm sorry, on general public comment. So first, matters on the agenda, followed by general public comment. Mr. Stein, do you want to read the rules for public comment, please?
Certainly. Speakers should either sign in at the front of the room if they are physically present or raise their hand on Zoom if they would like to speak. All speakers that are present must come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether matters germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Profane, slanderous, or discriminatory language or comments will not be tolerated in accordance with the county's non-discrimination policy. A time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The Board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded that this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The Board Chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling from the seats, arguing whether matters germane to county business once the solicitor has made determination on such, or refusing to yield the floor once the time has elapsed and been requested to yield, shall be grounds for removal or muting or removal from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. And as always, the Commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedbacks at commissioners@montco PA dot org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, so we will start with public comment on matters appearing on the agenda for anyone who's in the room that would like to make public comment on any agenda matters. Okay. Then we will move to any individuals online who would like to make public comment.
Okay, we have one, a few people with their hands raised. We'll start with Laura Lehman. You are now unmuted.
Hi. Did you just move from, did you just move from the agenda comments to regular public comment without taking my hand was up the whole time?
No, we are on, we are just starting for people who are virtual with public comments on matters appearing on the agenda.
Oh, okay, all right. So, so my comment appears on every agenda item is our speaking rules for agenda items are still not correct, and if we have a solicitor that does not recognize the sunshine law and the condition that anyone who has a perceived violation of speaking rights is allowed to interrupt the meeting at any time and explain that perceived violation, then we have a solicitor that should step down. We can't have people taking away our rights to our, we have very, very few rights. I mean, you spent more time reading the rules of what we're not allowed to do when we speak than you spend taking the rules. 800,000 residents, and, and most times you have just a couple of speakers, and they are cut off after two minutes and not even allowed to make cogent comments. So when Mr. Stein makes rules, and I assume he made them and approved them for you, that say that you cannot actually discuss anything if, if he's made a determination that they're not germane, every single thing we say is germane. We're asking you to create laws for problems that we have. So he cannot be the arbiter quickly of what's germane and then cut us off. At what point do you allow employees that seem not to understand the law to be your legal advisors? We need to have that fixed. It's a major problem, and there are other employees that are doing that. So please fix the speaking rules. They affect every agenda item, and you need to spend more time talking to your residents than you do. 800,000 residents, and largely you spend about four to eight minutes on them a month.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments on items on the agenda?
Yes, we have Ally Sherbini. You are now unmuted. Ally, you just have to unmute there. Again, if you could just hit the unmute button, you should be able to unmute yourself to speak.
Okay, well, we can come back if, yeah, if, if there's a technical issue there. Okay, so we will now move on to general public comment. Anyone in the room who would like to make general public comment? Okay? How about anybody online who would like to make general public comment?
Okay. We have one person. We'll go to Brendan. You should be able to unmute now.
Great, yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Brendan Lyons. I am a resident of Hatboro, close to the Hatboro horse room. Anyway, first of all, I want to say congratulations, Dr. Arkush, on your Senate run. Good luck. I do, however, have one small issue. In your comments last week, you made some comments about House Bill 118 that were erroneous. You claimed there was a fine for miscarriage when there's only an optional.
Mr. Lyons, I'm gonna have to stop.
I'd like an apology if I could.
Mr. Lyons, this is not matter that is germane to county business.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It is, though, because she's my representative, and if she's gonna lie, she's gonna make me look bad.
Actually, she's a county commissioner, and the matters you are raising are not matters that are going to come to the Commissioners before.
She's my county commissioner, sir, and I would like her to apologize. So you have a minute of my time if you'd like to apologize, Dr. Arkush.
If you don't have any matters that are germane to county business, then we're gonna move on.
You can do it over email, then. I'll take an apology there, that's fine, or on your Twitter, anywhere. Please apologize for lying.
All right, anyone else with general public comment?
I think we're gonna go back to Ally at this point. Ally, if you can unmute yourself.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, Commissioner Val, Ken, Joe, thanks for, thanks for doing your job and thanks for having these meetings. I know I've seen you guys around town in Norristown, and you, you know, the, the Norristown is, you know, it's the county seat, and it's a great, you know, it's a representation of the county, and we're the second wealthiest in Pennsylvania. But I'll, I emailed you guys this, and I'll read exactly what I wrote. My name is Ally Sherbini. I'm the director of the Norristown Company. Our mission is to address housing affordability, granting folks financial freedom while generating a return for the taxpayer. The county's planning on borrowing and investing over $400 million to expand the Justice Center, but the investment will not, although the investment will create a more attractive and effective judicial campus, it is not expected to generate a financial return on behalf of the taxpayer. Norristown is a reflection of Montgomery County. The majority of our population is burdened by their cost of living, drastically affecting their way of living, which also includes high property taxes, which is a product of an abundance of non-ratable real estate. The Norristown Company potential collaboration with the municipality can partner with the county to address both those challenges. If we raise an additional $53 million, we can create high-quality, a high-quality housing product in downtown where folks pay rent based on their income, creating the opportunity for them to save for homeownership, or frankly, for some, to just stay afloat. The highest earners offset the lower, generating enough of return where the taxpayer makes a spread over the cost of borrowing, thus balancing a significant portion of the $400 million investment. The, the, the reason that we need to do this is this, this investment, again, is not going to generate any additional revenue. It's not expected to generate any additional revenue to cover the debt servicing associated with the investment. And we also have this housing affordability problem in Norristown, and again, it's a reflection of the county, which is frankly a bad reflection of the county because it's kind of like being down in Washington. We're the wealthiest nation in the world, and we have so much poverty, and our own people can't afford to live. So my, the, the, the reason I'm presenting this to you is we love the opportunity to present the model. Which we can balance that, we can balance the budget and the deficit so that it's not coming out of taxpayer, you know, tax, taxpayer dollars.
You're gonna have to wrap up.
And, okay, my time is up?
Yes.
Okay. So all the Commissioners know about this, and you've heard about this, and you've, I'm, I'm sure heard from the RDA and C.
Okay, anyone else for general public comment?
Okay, we do have Laura Lehman. You can now unmute.
Okay, thank you. That, that was unbelievable. These are people trying to get something important across to you. You just have no right to cut them off. This is our government, and you know that there's nobody that you represent that wants you to cut residents off and not finish their thoughts. My name is Laura Lehman. I have a website called abbingtoncitizens.com, and I recommend anybody in the county who hears me, who is sick of this kind of government, please give me a call. We have literally 800,000 constituents, and they're not being served by two minutes of comment that they get cut off before their, their thoughts are finished. We, we actually, and, and Dr. Arkush, you're seeking higher office while keeping in place the measures that suppress participation by the constituents in your county. This is just unforgettable. You're, again, your speaking rules are in violation of the law. Your planning department is wreaking havoc, and you have been told that. I have been asking for a meeting with you. If I came with $100 and told you I had a 50 by 50 lot, and I wanted to put a 12-story building on it, I'll bet I would get a meeting in five minutes. But I cannot get a meeting to make things better that are broken under your supervision. And I, and I also want you not to cut me off without a warning and let me finish my sentence, okay? You need to fix this. There is no public input that is proper in this county, and I know other people that have major issues that you will not address, okay? So I would like to have a meeting with you. I'd like you to tell me right now at this meeting that you will have a meeting with me and that your representative will get in touch with me, and we'll sit down and talk about the Planning Commission and what they're doing. That's illegal.
Ms. Lehman, your time is up.
And may I have an answer?
As I said, stated before, this is not an opportunity for questions and answers. Thank you for your comments.
All right, any other general public comment? Is it? Okay, great.
Oh, wait, we do have one person. Sorry, Mark Jones. Mark, you're now unmuted.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to thank you guys for the time. My name is Mark Jones from Bridgeport. I just wanted to thank the Commissioners through some of our work in regards to ending cash bail in Montgomery County. And I want to thank you guys because I noticed you guys did hear the community, and adding the additional resources to the Public Defender's Office was one of the key components to actually addressing some of the disparities we have in our incarceration rates in Montgomery County. So I want to really thank you for that. I think that was super important. Think we could probably go further with it. I'm hoping that eventually. we do go further with the funding of the PG's office, but just in reference to that specific topic, I do, I wanted to reach out and thank you guys for taking the time to listen to the community and at least trying to do some things that could help us with our, you know, incarceration rate. Also, just case for anybody else who hasn't been listening, Montgomery County has, I think, almost forty percent of the people who were incarcerated are no longer incarcerated in Montgomery County prison. I would hope that the commissioners stand with the people and continuing to lower that rate so that we could look at eventually ridding ourselves of that financial burden that we carry with a prison to house people. I'd also ask the commissioners to look at the fact that even in decarceration, the way we have in Monaco, our crime rate hasn't gone up, which means we should be looking at our entire system and how we've previously handled criminal justice in Monaco, because it's clear that just incarcerating people is is not and will not be the answer. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Is that everybody? Okay, great. All right, thank you, everyone. Next, we will move on to some announcements, or one announcement at least, and this is always one of our favorite acts. Oh, thank you. I missed the minutes. All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the May 20th, 2021 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Here we now will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Here we now, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. All right, now on to our opioid overdose awareness billboard contest, something that we do every year, and I'm so glad to see that we were able to get this done this year despite obviously some challenges, and we have Neta Sultani to present. Great. Neta is our opioid use disorder coordinator, and I think joining her is Linda Moore Singleton, the administrator for our Office of Drug and Alcohol.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning. Did you want us to just talk a little bit about the competition?
That would be great.
Yeah, so it was for all high schoolers across Montgomery County. We got about twenty-nine submissions, and we had three top submissions. And they should actually be up right now across our county, so you should be able to see them. There's our first place. Colby from North Penn High School, our sec- and our second place, Ryan Fan from Methockton High School. And then we have our third place, Allison Fight from Plymouth White Marsh High School. And they all just represent, you know, opioid use prevention. We had a lot of great submissions. And these were the three that were voted amongst our top three.
That's great. And and Neta, do you want to talk a little bit about how they're being displayed around the county?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Could you just ta- talk a little bit about how they're being displayed around the county?
Oh, yeah, so we have, we have both. So our first place has digital billboards across the county. And then our second place has posters and bus shelters. They're across the county, but really targeting our hotspots. So we have, you might see them a little bit more like in Norristown and Pottstown, but we really tried our best to cover, cover the county and the students' work.
Great. Well, thank you. Ms. Moore Singleton, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Linda, I think you're muted.
You would think fifteen months in, I would have this thing down pat, right?
Happens to all of us.
The world of Zoom. No, just want to thank you guys for all your support around our initiatives that we have. You've supported us for so long, and we just appreciate all the support the commissioners are giving us around prevention, intervention, and treatment.
Great, thank you. Well, it's just so important that we lift this up today. While the pandemic has been top of mind for so many people, the opioid overdose situation has not gone away. And I'm I'm glad that we have a little more bandwidth and space now to return our attention to some of these ongoing challenges. And I know the students aren't here this year, and, you know, we look forward to seeing them in person next year. But I want to congratulate Colby and Ryan and Allison for this outstanding artwork. And what we've heard from the students every year when they have been able to join us at these meetings is how important the creation of this art was to fostering conversation among students, among their peer students in their schools, and how important that conversation is to decreasing the stigma around substance use disorders. So again, just want to say thank you to everyone, to Linda and Neta, for making sure that we got this done this year, despite what I'm sure were some significant challenges. And just a huge thanks to these students for keeping their eye on this very important issue. And I hope that this artwork continues to inspire lots of young people and many, many others to get help if they need it.
I want to congratulate the three students, Colby, Ryan, and Allison. Thank you, Neta and Linda, for for all your work. You know, as Commissioner Arkush said, this is something that we used to talk about a lot. We used to talk about it a lot. In the past year, we haven't talked about it as much, and the issue has not gone away. So I'm, I want to thank the students for helping us bring more awareness to this. As we come out of this pandemic, we need to, we need to refocus our attention on this issue as well.
I'd also like to thank all our staff from the Office of Drug and Alcohol for the work they do year-round to combat this very important issue. And it's critical that our young generations learn about the significance and the danger behind opioid addiction. And I also enjoy seeing the children every year, and I'm proud of their dedication to this cause. And I also admire their artwork and their talents in that respect as well. So thank you to all the students across the school districts that participated, and we'll continue to promote this important cause. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Durtone, you're up with a financial update.
Morning, commissioners. It's nice to be back here in the boardroom and see everybody in person. Today, I'm gonna give you an update on our finances. Typically, this time of year, you know, we are in the audit period and closing out the prior fiscal year. I will say that this year has been a challenge in terms of the closeout of 2020 with all the new grant revenues that came in at one time, the county transitioning to a new financial system, and at the same time, onboarding a new external auditor. It's been a lot of work for the Controller's Office and for us as an organization. However, we are still on track. Audit field work has been underway, is being completed. The next step is to draft our audited financial statements and then issue the comprehensive annual financial report, which right now the target date goal is June 30th. That's typical when we do issue, and we'll know in the weeks ahead how we're doing against that goal. So the plan is that after the comprehensive annual financial report is issued, we'll do another presentation in the July board cycle and give an update on the final audited numbers. Sorry about that. Okay. So I am gonna talk about the preliminary numbers for 2020, but before I do that, I just wanted to take a step back. As you will recall, back in November of last year, as the budget was developed for 2021, we had put together our forecast at that time. And at that time, we were projecting revenues in excess of expense of about $18 million. In addition to that, there was a proposed assignment of ending fund balance for future debt and pension costs, which was roughly fourteen and a half million. With those projections, that would have taken fund balance down to about 96 million, which was just under 22% of the projected revenue and slightly above the higher end of our fund balance goal range of 20%. So turning to the preliminary numbers, and I'll continue calling preliminary. They're still under audit. I do expect that we may have adjustments to what you're gonna see today. However, by the time, you know, we do the next financial presentation, it will be the final numbers. As I said, the grant funding overall has been a challenge, and, you know, obviously with new auditors coming online, there's a lot more documentation and discussion about some of the numbers that that are being booked. So at the moment, these are the preliminary numbers, and as you can see, they're positive. Revenues are right now in excess of expense by about $41 million. You can see the big driver of that is on the revenue line item. We're about 58 million higher, or 14% versus the budget. A big piece of that is CARES Act reimbursement. So embedded in these numbers is about $50 million of CARES Act reimbursement for eligible expenditures according to U.S. Treasury guidance. As I said, this is an estimate. The county has not reimbursed itself yet out of the CARES Act fund to the general fund, but that is the number that's been proposed and is under audit. If these end up being the final numbers, you will see that fund balance would end at about 133 million. If you take out the assignment of the 14.5 that was projected in the budget plan for 2021, it leaves a gap of about 23 million to get fund balance down to the high end of the goal of 20% or 95 million. So that's, that's an area that will be under discussion, you know, as we complete the audit and even as we plan for the next budget year in 2022. Okay, so, sorry about that. It's a little touchy. Okay, so looking at the overall revenues, it's about 477 million on a preliminary basis. You can see our breakout, the CARES Act reimbursement is about 11% of the overall revenues. Federal and other state grants, about 35%, which is typical. And then real estate taxes at about 43%. Real estate tax would normally, if the CARES Act revenue was not included here, would probably be closer to 50% on an actual basis. So turning to some of the major revenue variances for 2020. I mentioned the CARES Act reimbursement of 50 million. In addition to that, our Public Health Act 315 revenue is at about 1.7 million, or 83% higher than the budget. This is one-time revenue. It's a result of a state audit that was completed in 2019. We received the revenues for that in 2020. Overall, commissions across all the departments are about 9% higher, or for just over 400,000. That is primarily related to Recorder Deeds Office. With, you know, the strong home sales in 2020 and all the refinancing activity, the revenues overall in Recorder Deeds Office were significantly higher than the budgets or the projections. As you can see, the fee revenue, which is a separate line item, is about 1.3 million, or 31% higher. So turning to some of the negative variance, overall, fee revenue as a revenue line item is down by 3.2 million, even with that positive impact from the Recorder Deeds Office. That's 43% lower compared to budget. You can see by the departments, you know, most are court-related, where we have, you know, seen this impact, and this was anticipated. Even as we did our forecast, we knew with the mitigation efforts that were underway in 2020 that, and, you know, the way that we were operating, that we would experience something like this. So this clearly shows that, you know, some of those areas that we were talking about previously did, on an actual basis, come in a lot lower than than the budget had anticipated. I would just note some others, parking revenue, with the garages not in use, are down by about 300,000. Our landfill revenue is down. That's due to less utilization over there. Real estate tax revenue overall, down by about 1.4 million or 0.7%. This is really attributed to just slightly higher lien rates, or, you know, our current year collections were not as good as what we had experienced the past years. But this is not really significant. We'll realize the collection on these revenues, you know, as we move ahead for the next few years. Overall expenditures, about 436 million. I'll note that Health and Human Services is is the majority of this pie, 41%. Also, just note, you know, debt service at 10 and a half percent. As has been noted by Moody's, this has been consistently consistently lower than some of the other comparable triple A's, which is a good sign. Some of the major expenditure variances, overall personnel costs, about 3.8 million, or 2% lower compared to budget. This is consistent with our prior year, our prior year's experience on the expenditure side. We would expect something in this range, so that that's a good sign. As you know, we do build in a negative appropriation to the budget, which most, most of those savings come in the area of personnel. The general fund subsidy to the 911 Fund is 2.3 million lower than what was anticipated. The operating revenues exceeded expenditures in the 911 Fund, so no general fund subsidy will be needed for 2020. And then cost of prosecution overall, with what, you know, was going on in 2020 with the courts, is down, you know, by about 500,000 or 80%. So turning to 2021, the first quarter, just at a high level, you can see that revenues and expenses are fairly consistent with the revenue and expenses for the first three months of last year. So we're we're trending in line with what the budget had anticipated. Don't forget that on the revenue side, as we were developing the 2021 budget with the departments, we had rebased revenues, knowing that, you know, going into the beginning of 2021, we would still be operating, you know, similar to what we were, you know, in the fourth quarter of 2020, with, you know, the expectation that things would ramp back up again as they are. So I think that, you know, we are trending in line with the budget, and I think that we'll be a little bit of catch-up that'll occur over the next six months, and and things should pan out the way that we have expected, both on the revenue side and the expense side. Just, just a few trends here that we're seeing in in the first three months. So, you know, fee revenue again is trending below the budget. District Justice Court-related revenues, you know, are lower than where they would normally be, you know, in the first quarter. So we'll we'll probably see, you know, a little bit of a catch-up with that. You know, I'm hopeful that, you know, we can achieve the budget, but, you know, when we come back in the fall and put together our formal projections for 2021, we'll have a better handle on where things are at that point and be able to target, you know, better where we're gonna end up at. So real estate tax collections in the first three months, you know, have been strong, and as we would expect, there's, you know, no negative variances there. You know, nothing that that we're concerned with. You know, Q2 will really, you know, tell the tale, because the discount period will end, and inflight will end. But a trend that really stands out, although it's not a huge budget number, but it, you know, it's it's a $2 million budget number on an annual basis, is the gaming revenue. It's been trending significantly higher in past quarters, but the first quarter of 2021 was a lot higher than what we would have anticipated. So we'll continue to watch that, you know, as we go through the rest of this year, but I do think we'll outperform budget on that revenue line item. Our commission revenues right now are stable in the first quarter as we compare them to 2020 and the first quarter of actual revenue from last year. So things look okay there. And Recorder Deeds revenue, it's in line with the budget. So even though there still is a continued trend of strong home sales, as I said, we did rebase the budget. They're performing within the budget, which is good. They're performing within the budget, which is good. Just turning to the real estate side. As you can see, this is the county's real estate assessment growth for the first quarter compared to the first quarter of last year. Almost, you know, exactly in line with what we did for the first three months of 2020, about twenty-three-five percent. This is, this is a positive trend. You know, we typically project in the budget growth of about a half a percent. I will note, though, that assessment appeals will come in and we'll be dealing with them, you know, in the months ahead, you know, through October. So, there will be adjustments due to those assessment appeals, but we will continue to track and report the assessment growth as the year goes on. Actually, this is for the first four months, this activity. Turning to home sales for the first four months. You can see that the total number of properties sold is up fourteen percent on a four-month, four-month basis comparison. The median price of properties continues to increase, you know, as each quarter goes on, which is a positive sign and, you know, attributed to the strong home sales that are happening. The negative average days on the market is really, you know, due to, you know, the quick turnover of the homes and there's not a lot of inventory out there. So, that, that is a problem that the real estate market's dealing with currently and we'll continue to monitor this trend. So, I just wanted to give a quick update on financial planning for 2022. It just seems like, it just seemed like we finished the budget process for 2021. Now, we're moving into 2022 and it's a pretty aggressive schedule on our side. We planned it that way to give ourselves more time to speak with the board, you know, because I think that coming out of the pandemic, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, we'll want to take some time to discuss and know what the impacts will be on the short term and the long term. So, departmental meetings for the budgets will be underway in late June and will continue through July into the beginning of August. This is where we do detailed review with the department heads. We have a budget team that, that spends, you know, at least an hour or two with each department, you know, walking through their goals, their performances, you know, their performance measures and, and, you know, the detailed numbers that they're proposing. The timeline has us, you know, with some scheduled info sessions with the board in September and October. Then the release of the proposed operating budget and the five-year capital plan is tentatively scheduled for November eighteenth, which will be followed by one or two public hearings and then the adopted, the adoption of the proposed budget and the capital budget during the December board cycle. So, that's all I have.
Oh, Mr. Dorton, thank you. You and your team have been nonstop at this with a constantly shifting situation because of the pandemic and I just really appreciate and want to publicly acknowledge all the work that you all have done. This has not been easy. Some departments obviously have been way behind in their revenue, but we've also gotten some funds through the CARES Act and other things that have helped to stabilize our situation, but your team has just been constantly at work trying to understand what's coming in and what are allowable uses of those funds and making sure that we have all the resources we need to serve our constituents here in the county. So, thank you so much for your work during this past very, very difficult year and I'm sure it doesn't feel like it ever stopped because it did never stop, so. But hopefully, our next year is going to be a little more straightforward, a little more back to normal and kind of our regular process, so we certainly look forward to that.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that as well.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Dean, it certainly has been nonstop. You've been nonstop, your team has been nonstop. Thank you for that. Just one question with court-related revenue. How quickly do we anticipate that that will pick up as the courts come back in fully? Is there any way to project?
Yeah, I, you know, I think that we'll probably see a quick, you know, turnaround of, of revenues in, in the third quarter. By the time courts gets underway and things really start ramping up and things, you know, the processing begins, I think that we will probably see a turnaround in the third quarter, likely early in the third quarter. And then that should continue, you know, through year-end as long as everything is maintained at the levels that we expect.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Dorton. I just have one quick question. With the 2020 revenue, the departmental earnings was eleven percent. On a typical year, an average year, what was that revenue typically? Like taxes was forty-three percent, typically it's around fifty, closer to fifty.
Oh, yeah, the departmental earnings, yeah. You know, I, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'll get back to you on it.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the graph is, is a little bit mixed with, you know, the CARES Act in there, but I will provide that to you.
All right, appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we will move on to resolutions. Mr. Good.
Sheldon, are ready for you?
Can you hear me?
You can. You have an authorization to advertise the 2021 Annual Action Plan and proposed changes to the 2015, sixteen, and nineteen Annual Action Plans.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sheldon Good and I'm the Administrator for the Office of Housing and Community Development within the Department of Health and Human Services. This first action is to authorize the Office of Housing and Community Development's 2021 Annual Action Plan, including the attached list of proposed projects for funding under Community Development Block Grant Program or CDBG, Home Investment Partnerships Program or HOM, Emergency Solutions Grant Program or ESG, Affordable Housing Trust Fund or AHTF, and the Housing Reinvestment Partnership, and the proposed amendments to the 2015, 2016, and 2019 Annual Action Plans to be available for public comment for a period of thirty days, beginning June four, 2021, and ending on July four, 2021. The public hearing to be conducted through virtual or electronic means is necessary on June twenty-three, 2021 at six P.M. Public comment will be accepted until July four, 2021, with final action on the 2021 Annual Action Plan to be taken on July fifteen, 2021. Submission of the Annual Action Plan to HUD will be made by August thirteen, 2021. In preparing an Annual Action Plan, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Program Regulations require the county to follow a citizen participation plan, which we have done. In February of 2021, we announced and conducted a series of citizen participation meetings to gather information, comments, and concerns from the general public about the needs within their neighborhoods. Additionally, in February and in March, we held a series of application training sessions to provide information on program requirements and application procedures. These sessions were individually structured to assist municipal officials, nonprofit agency staff members, and affordable housing developers with their preparation of an application for funding support of their projects. Each group is also provided with training and information on the provisions of the Federal Fair Housing Act as well as state and local laws and ordinances addressing fair housing. The 2021 Annual Action Plan addresses three overarching goals of HUD programs that are applied according to the needs of Montgomery County as identified through the planning process. The goals are, first, to provide decent housing by preserving affordable housing stock, increasing availability of affordable housing, reducing discriminatory barriers, increasing the supply of supportive housing for those with special needs, and transitioning homeless persons and families into permanent housing. Second, to provide a suitable living environment through safer, more livable neighborhoods, greater integration of low and moderate income residents throughout the county, increased housing opportunities and reinvestment in deteriorating neighborhoods. Third, to expand economic opportunities through more jobs paying self-sufficient wages, homeownership opportunities, development activities to promote long-term community viability, and the empowerment of low and moderate income persons to achieve self-sufficiency. The primary federal funding sources in the 2021 Annual Action Plan are again CDBG, HOM, and ESG. These programs aim, aim to develop, develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities, principally for persons of low and moderate income levels. In Montgomery County, these funding sources are augmented by other sources with compatible goals such as the county's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the Human Services Block Grant, and the Housing Reinvestment Partnership. Funds can be used for a wide variety of activities in the areas of affordable housing development, rehabilitation, shelter and supportive services for persons experiencing homelessness, construction and rehabilitation of public facilities and infrastructure, removal of architectural barriers to mobility and economic development. We received applications to the programs on April ninth. Staff of the Office of Housing and Affordable, Housing and Community Development reviewed the applications to determine if each one meets the eligibility standards and established objectives of the programs. Staff is making recommendations for funding allocations as illustrated in the exhibit attached to the draft resolution. The project funding recommendations include allocations to two affordable housing projects from the Housing Reinvestment Partnership totaling eight-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. This is a funding source that the county's Office of Mental Health, Developmental Disabilities, and Early Intervention receives through the state Pennsylvania Office of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. Our office assists them with program management and our staffs have collaborated in the review of these two projects and are jointly making these recommendations. The county is also included in its 2021 Annual Action Plan projects to be funded by the Human Services Block Grant or HSBG through the Pennsylvania Department of Public Welfare. These activities appearing in the exhibit be funded effective July first, 2021, to June thirtieth, 2022. And that concludes my comments regarding this first resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Good. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the 2021 Annual Action Plan, including the attached list of proposed projects for funding and the proposed amendments to the 2015, sixteen, and nineteen Annual Action Plans be available for public comment for a period of thirty days, beginning June the fourth, 2021, and ending on July the fourth, 2021, with a public hearing to be conducted on June the twenty-third, 2021, at six P.M. And final action on the 2021 Annual Action Plan to be taken on July the fifteenth, 2021. Submission of the Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development will be made by August the thirteenth, 2021, be it further resolved that the Human Services Block Grant activities appearing in the attached list of proposed projects are hereby funded effective July first, 2021, to June thirtieth, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Mr. Good, just one question, well, one clarification. Just reminding everyone, we're simply voting today to make this information public and available for public comment. And, and Mr. Good, where would people be able to find this information? And how would they get the information about the public hearing?
Yeah, it'll be available on the Montgomery County website, montcopa.org, starting tomorrow.
Okay, great. And will it be on the homepage or will they have to?
Yeah, if you go under Departments to Department of Health and Human Services and then to the, to our offices page, the Office of, of Housing and Community Development, it'll be listed there.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Okay, great. Hearing no additional board comment, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, next, we have an authorization to advertise the proposed amendments to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Good?
All right, the second action is indeed to authorize an amendment to the county's Program Year 2019 Annual Action Plan, including the proposed activities illustrated in the exhibit to the draft resolution for funding under the CDBG-CV-three program to be available for public comment for a period of thirty days, beginning June fourth, 2021, and ending on July fourth, 2021, with a public hearing to be conducted through virtual electronic means as necessary on June twenty-third, 2021, at six P.M. Pursuant to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has allocated funds to Montgomery County, providing a second round of community development block grants, which we refer to as CDBG-CV-three, funding to support those experiencing homelessness and individuals at risk of becoming homeless because of hardships such as job loss, wage reduction, or illness due to COVID-19. The county of Montgomery has considered the housing and community development needs of the citizens of the county impacted by COVID-19, particularly the needs of lower-income families and individuals, elderly persons, disabled persons, and persons experiencing homelessness. After an amendment to the Program 2019 Annual Action Plan, including the list of proposed activities for funding under the CDBG-CV-three program is illustrated in the exhibit attached to the draft resolution, public comment will be accepted until July four, 2021, with final action on the, the plan to be taken on July fifteenth, 2021. And again, that, that information is located in the same place on our website.
Great, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan, including the attached list of proposed activities for funding under the Community Development Block Grant Program to be available for public comment for a period of thirty days, beginning June the fourth, 2021, and ending on July the fourth, 2021, with a public hearing to be conducted on June the twenty-third, 2021, at six P.M. Be it further resolved, the public comment will be accepted by the Board of Commissioners until July the fourth, 2021, with final action on the proposed amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan to be taken on July the fifteenth, 2021. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Good.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Stein, emergency declaration authorization.
Yes, thank you. I know I do not need to remind you that back on March eighth of 2020, the Commissioners voted to declare a disaster emergency in Montgomery County due to the spread of the COVID-19 pandemic. You have then reauthorized that declaration seven times since that date. The current declaration, which was authorized on April fifteenth, will expire on June seventh. To give you some background, at the end of April, HHS Secretary Becerra extended the national declaration. So, if it does not, if it's not ended prior to that, it would expire on August nineteenth. Similarly, on May twentieth of this year, Governor Wolf extended the statewide declaration related to COVID-19 and if that is not terminated earlier, it will expire on August eighteenth. Our declarations go for sixty days, so if we were to extend it, if we did not end it earlier, it would expire on Friday, August sixth. During this time, we have utilized this emergency declaration to cut through red tape and allow us to be able to stand up staff and maintain firstly testing sites and then all the mass vaccination clinics. As long as we continue to utilize those and need to be able to respond quickly and decisively for the benefit of the health, safety, and welfare of the public, the staff recommends that we keep this emergency declaration in place.
Thank you. I will move that we, the undersigned Commissioners of Montgomery County, pursuant to the provisions of Section seven-five-zero-one of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code as amended, do hereby declare the existence of a disaster emergency in Montgomery County. Further, we direct the Montgomery County Office of Public Health and the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, to take all appropriate action needed to alleviate the effects of this disaster, to aid in the restoration of essential public services, and to take any other emergency response action deemed necessary to respond to this disaster emergency. This declaration shall take effect June the eighth, 2021, and last for a period of sixty days. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. And Mr. Stein, there would be nothing to preclude us from ending this early if we felt that that was appropriate, is that correct?
Absolutely, and I would be overjoyed to write that resolution for you.
Any other board comments?
Mr. Stein, so as an example, I know that the air conditioning went down at the Montgomery Mall at the mass vaccination site and we were able to get in there quickly and fix it so the site could open. Without this resolution, we would have had to have gone through a normal bidding process and it could have been several weeks before.
Precisely.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Hearing no additional comments, we will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
Negative vote.
Okay, Ms. Washington, I want to do a roll call, please.
Chair Arquish?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Aye.
Commissioner Gale?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries. All right, Ms. O'Malley, advertisements of a bid and RFPs.
Yes, we have a bid on behalf of public safety for a roof replacement. The successful bidder will provide a replacement roof on the fire and EMS administration and training building at the public safety training campus. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, an RFP on behalf of Information and Technology Solutions to augment development staff for Microsoft SharePoint projects. The successful responder will be a Microsoft-certified partner and provide The successful responder will be a Microsoft Certified Partner and provide augmentation services to Montgomery County Information and Technology Solutions Department staff in the areas of development, deployment, and transfer of knowledge. The Microsoft Certified Partner will also be available as a technical resource on an as-needed basis to provide support with urgent issues as they occur. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Three, an RFP on behalf of Information and Technology Solutions to augment development staff for Microsoft Dynamics CRM projects. The successful responder will be a Microsoft Certified Partner and will be utilized in hourly increments to assist current development staff in the completion of CRM projects as they arise. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Four, an RFP on behalf of Information and Technology Solutions for Digital Security Services. The successful responder will provide digital forensic and incident response services. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montcopa.org/purchasing.
And Ms. O'Malley, are we doing the advertisement for the task force separately or...
There is also a bid for the task force for the upgrade of training equipment. The successful responder will provide an upgrade to the gas fire training props at the Montgomery County Public Safety Training Campus to meet the new National Fire Protection Association standards, and the contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding requests for the advertisement of bids and RFPs as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, awards of contract for the county.
One, a contract award for assets and infrastructure vehicles, Burge's Truck Center of Conshohocken, PA, $210,277. Contract provides two Mack dump trucks for roads and bridges. Vehicles are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award assets and infrastructure roofing, Summit &amp; Schaefer Roofing and Siding Incorporated of Sodderton, PA, $28,375. Contract provides the replacement of the roof at the Old Mill House in Central Purgham Valley Park. Specification 6436 was viewed by 21 providers with four responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Three, contract award Public Safety Cloud Services, DLT Solutions LLC of Herndon, Virginia, $105,000. Contract provides Amazon GovCloud services for the countywide record management system for Montgomery County for a one-year term. Services are available through an omni-U.S. communities cooperative contract. Four, contract award Health and Human Services, In-Home Services, multiple providers, $2,728,300. Contracts provide for home health services to include the services of skilled nursing, medication management, and home health aides on a part-time or intermittent basis, not otherwise covered under a third-party payer for older adults. RFP 2102 was viewed by 48 providers with 19 responses received. RFP 2110 was viewed by 50 providers with 19 responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest rated providers. Contracts for a three-year term with two optional annual renewal terms. Providers are Star Alert of Monhome, PA, Addis Home Care of Philadelphia, PA, Allegiant Home Healthcare LLC of Norristown, PA, Bayotta Home Healthcare Incorporated of Media, PA, Better Home Care Agency LLC of Feasterville, PA, Carvel Health Services Incorporated of Huntington Valley, PA, Hands From The Heart Home Healthcare Services of Ballackinwood, PA, Lifeline Systems Company of Framingham, Massachusetts, Assisting Hands of Collegeville of Eagleville, PA, Open Systems Healthcare Incorporated of Ballackinwood, PA, Penn Asian Senior Services of Philadelphia, PA, Reliant and Home Care Incorporated of Conshohocken, PA, VNA Community Services Incorporated of Abington, PA, Advanced Living Home Services Incorporated of Lansdale, PA, Caregivers America LLC of Clark Summit, PA, Comfort Care Home Care of Montgomery County Southeast of Ambler, PA, Community Health Home Health Incorporated of Trebos, PA, Bounty Caregivers Network of Pensford, PA, Iverston Senior Care of Jenkentown, PA, Medscope America Corporation of Paoli, PA, Comfort Care Home Care of Montgomery County North, PA, of Lansdale, PA, Campering Plus Incorporated of Abington, PA, Senior Helpers of Lansdale of Harlesville, PA, and Vita Care Home Health Incorporated of Feasterville, PA. Five, a contract award Information and Technology Solutions Equipment, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, $40,006. Contract provides 24 laptops, docs, additional memory, and support for use by the Health and Human Services Early Learning Resource Center. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Six, contract renewal assisted living, HumenGood Pennsylvania of Lafayette, PA, $48,100. Contract provides for assisted living needs of one former resident of the county assisted living facility. Contract is valid through June 23, 2022. Seven, contract amendment to assets and infrastructure engineering, Bergman Associates Incorporated of Conshohocken, PA, $6,520. Original contract provided for an engineering firm to perform the required engineering, environmental permitting, and construction consultation for replacement of county grade number 163, Lutheran Road of Minister Creek in New Panover Township. Amendment provides for the required plan and specification updates to advertise projects for construction as a result of the delay in obtaining right-of-way clearance. Eight, contract amendment, planning commission, engineering, and Oni Associates Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, no cost. Original contract provided for construction inspection services for Section MGN Phase III of Lafayette Street Project. Amendment provides for a no-cost time extension to the anticipated project end date of December 31, 2021. There's one contract, nine contract renewals, and one amendment for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the emergency agenda and in the back of the group.
I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, awards of contract for emergency procurement.
Contracts provide various goods and services required for response to the COVID-19 pandemic. One, response equipment, public safety, motorola of Chicago, Illinois, $22,683.84. Contract provides mobile radios for use at the vaccination sites. Two, response services, Health and Human Services, SJ Thomas Company Incorporated of Lansdowne, PA, $23,317.60. Contract provides for completion of construction work done at Montgomery Mall Vaccination Site. Three, response services, Health and Human Services, SJ Thomas Company Incorporated of Lansdowne, PA, $52,405.76. Contract provides for completion of construction work done at King of Prussia Mall Vaccination Site. Four, response services, Health and Human Services, rental fees, Norristown Area School District of Norristown, PA, $153,958.72. Contract provides the rental of space for the vaccination site on the campus of the Norristown Area School District High School for usage during the months of January through May 2021. Five, response services, Health and Human Services, security services, multiple providers. Contracts provide for one or two uniformed armed police officers for daily security support as needed at the five county vaccination sites. Providers are Montgomery Township, Lansdale Borough, Upper Marion Township, West Norton Township, and Abington Township. Six, response services commissioners, review plan, Yelson Group LTD of Alexandria, Virginia, $30,000. Contract provides for Part II of the after-action report for Montgomery County's COVID-19 response. Part II of the after-action report will follow up on corrective actions found in Part I of the improvement plan, and it will identify any new strengths and lessons learned from the county's vaccine operations. Seven, response services amendment, Information and Technology Solutions licensing, Zoom Video Communications Incorporated of San Jose, California, $15,300. Contract provides 100 additional Zoom licenses for a one-year term beginning 5/11/2021. Eight, response services amendment commerce, Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board of King of Prussia, PA, $1,400,000. Amendment provides an additional $1,400,000 to continue with the CARES Act Make It Main Street program with the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. Initiative to restart business and reinvigorate communities in Montgomery County will focus on recovery of small businesses and local communities and support Main Street businesses. This amendment also provides a vaccination campaign initiative to include the development of an integrated marketing plan targeting Montgomery County individuals 16 to 30 years of age to encourage vaccination against COVID-19.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment?
I have comment.
Okay, Mr. Gail.
I have comment regarding contract amendment number eight, which is the $1.4 million contract with the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. I'm in disagreement with the section regarding the vaccination campaign initiative and marketing plan to target individuals 16 years of age to 30 to encourage the vaccination for COVID-19. These include minors, and in my opinion, this decision should be left up to the children and their parents and also their doctors. And we also know that this age demographic is not in dire need of the vaccination. So in my opinion, the funding through the CARES Act dedicated to this cause is not being spent wisely and effectively, and I'd like to oppose that. So we can either separate the contract amendment from your motion, or I'll have to oppose the entire contract amendment, contract section.
All right, I am happy to separate. So we will vote on items one through seven. Is there any additional board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, items one through seven are passed. And next, we will move on to item number eight. And Ms. Washington?
Chair Arquish?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Aye.
Commissioner Gail?
Opposed.
Motion carries. All right, awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
One, a contract award training, WMD Tech of Boise, Idaho, $35,500. Contract provides special events response training for the regional counties. Training is proprietary. Two, contract renewal software, Everbridge Incorporated of Glendale, California, $35,450. Contract provides the access to the Everbridge Community Engagement Online Tool from Montgomery County. Software is available through a federal GSA contract. Three, contract amendment, cloud services, DLT Solutions of Herndon, Virginia, $8,000. Original contract provided Amazon GovCloud services for the countywide record management system for Montgomery County. Amendment provides for fees associated with increased usage. Services are available through an omni-U.S. communities cooperative contract.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries, thank you. All right, are there any closing commissioner comments? Okay, then I will announce that our next meeting, our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be June 17, 2021 in this room, and I will move to adjourn the June 3, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned, and we will move into Salary Board. Ms. Perdue is here with us, I believe the controller is online, I see you're square, good morning.
You see her what?
Your square.
Oh.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay? Controller, can you hear me okay? Controller Sanchez, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, I can hear you.
Great, terrific, just wanted to make sure, sorry about that. All right, Ms. Perdue.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, June 2, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. Of note, we have five retirees, Glenn Beard from Assets and Infrastructure after 37 years, Lynda Johnson from Assets and Infrastructure after 15 years, Kimberly Henry from Quartz after 39 years, Richard Renair from Quartz after four years, and Deborah Chiappelli from the Health Department after 28 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Great, thank you, Ms. Perdue. I did get it just a bit out of order here and forgot to check for public comment on Salary Board. So before we move on your, on your report, we'll check for public comment. My apologies on that. Anyone who would like to make public comment on Salary Board, you may raise your hand, Doesn't look like there's anybody, okay, great. In that case, I will move to approve the June 3, 2021 Salary Board presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we will move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And I know we have some retire reacknowledgements today?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
We have Rick Ellis to speak on Glenn Beard's retirement.
Good morning, everybody. I just want to say a few things about Glenn Beard. Glenn's been with the county for over 37 years and truly dedicated service to Montgomery County and the first responders. He's been instrumental in the design, installation, and upkeep of our 911 communication systems. This includes police, fire, and radio communications in the field and as well as communications between dispatchers and the field units. In his 37 years, he has brought the county from four police channels, two EMS channels, and four fire channels, and only having five towers for communications for 911, up to now having 30 remote towers, 56 channels, and over 12,000 users on this system in and around the county. His experience and dedication is unmatched, and he will truly be missed. All of us here at the 911 center really wish him the best in his retirement. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for those kind words and tribute, and we want to congratulate all of our retirees. This is an incredible amount of years of public service to this community, and we are so fortunate to have had the benefit of their expertise and commitment to serving the residents and workers of Montgomery County. So congratulations to all. What did I say? Okay, all right. That's it, right? Okay, all right, then with that, is there a motion to adjourn the June 3, 2020 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So.
Move by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned.